Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, compliance with NJ PES and the Open Public Meeting Act in accordance with DCA guidelines in relation to the functioning of virtual meetings. This rightly scheduled Jackson Township Board of Adjustment has been published and posted in appropriate locations.
Thank you, Mr. Gertner. Can I have roll call, please?
Mr. Costanzo?
Here.
Ms. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Hurley?
Here.
Ms. McElhany?
Here.
Ms. Camello?
I guess she's not on yet.
Is absent. Ms. Russell?
Here.
Mr. Najarian?
Here.
Mr. Book?
Here. Thank you. Do you have any resolutions for approval tonight?
Yes, there are two. First is Resolution 2021-18 Pawali, Block 1, 2201, Lot 1, 158 Frank Applegate Road, granting a variance to construct a shed, excuse me, a fence. Eligible are Mr. Costanzo, Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Camello, sorry, she's not in yet, Ms. Russell, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Book.
Thank you. Can I have your motion in a second to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Roll call, please. I'm sorry, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-19 Carden Alley and Jackson Crossings 2, Block 3, 001, Lots 2 through 4, granting amended preliminary and final site plan and minor subdivision approval for a commercial recreational facility. Daniel? Yes.
It's Ms. Camello. I am here. I finally got through as a panelist.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Eligible are Mr. Costanzo, Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Camello, Ms. Russell, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Book.
Can I have a motion in a second to approve that resolution, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
That concludes the resolutions for this evening.
Do you have any minutes for approval?
From April 21st. Eligible are Mr. Costanzo, Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Camello, Ms. Russell, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Book.
Can I have a motion in a second to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes. Let's hit on the minutes, yes?
Yes.
All right. Next, the vouchers. I have two vouchers, one for Daniel Senowitz, $150, and the other one to King Reporting, any amount of $250. Do you have a motion and a second to approve and pay the vouchers?
Take a motion to pay all bills.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. McElhany?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes. Okay, thank you. All right, moving right along, there are no announcements, but we want to cover everything in matters for discussion, no executive session, and then under matters for discussion, there are a couple of items, one of which is the calendar and the other is the fact that we seem to be moving away from these Zoom meetings, or at least the requirement for the Zoom meetings, and I can't wait. So I know, Mr. Gertner, you're going to address some of the items on the calendar and hopefully also tell us what we have to do to shut down this Zoom requirement completely and go back to the way we were.
So, Mr. Chairman, as correspondence indicates, and as you indicated as well, New Jersey's moving towards fully live meetings. At the time I wrote the letter, I was not yet aware that other municipalities had, in fact, or were, in fact, moving towards fully live meetings. Again, I've come to learn that a number of places in Ocean County are, in fact, moving to fully live meetings. Just to kind of cut the discussion to the chase, it would be my recommendation to move to live meetings effective the first meeting in July. That would give applicants who had already noticed for the, excuse me, the June 16th meeting, you know, the opportunity. This is more than sufficient time for members of the public to transition that, you know, that as well. Now, what that does, let me back up for a second. The primary reason I make the recommendation is that the legislature failed to act, quite frankly, in fully authorizing the virtual meetings. As of yet, DCA has yet to promulgate any guidelines moving forward out of COVID, so it's certainly the safer approach. I know I've been individually asked by some board members about the opportunity to participate virtually. There are certain procedures sometimes when folks are absent, particularly if you need somebody to participate as a forum, pre-Zoom, pre-virtual for phone. I would ask that board members not do that in the short term. I think if we're asking the public to make that transition, I think it's an important statement, both globally, non-legally, but legally as well, to support fully participate, full participation from the board and the public in-house. That doesn't mean, however, that certain things should not be, and I'll just articulate a further recommendation again, having heard from individual board members, I know a lot of people and the members of the public like the fact that the applications themselves and certain information has been available online. I think board, from the board members I have heard from to a person, everyone likes the fact that not only are applicants bringing in stuff, but our tech folk, you know, Mr. Jacob Anthony is able to put things on the screen as well. So I would add, and I've been working on, having talked to people, I have a sense of where the board is, some rules and regulations which would include applicants continuing to submit in PDF or other virtual formats so that the board and the public have the opportunity in a more easily accessible fashion to review documents. But to cut to the chase, it would be right, my recommendation, that the board, effective the July meetings, move to fully, you know, full live meetings at this, at this point. We can discuss perhaps at the next meeting whether or not you want to continue to tape, what I would use the term "tape," old school, it's probably a different word for it, to tape the meeting so that, or record the meeting with pictures so that folks who couldn't make the meeting could access them easily. I think that's probably a technology that's available, too. And I respectfully, I get to pontificate like a legislator a little bit, too. I would be personally in favor of that. It's all about access, and if you make access easier for the public, even if they can't make the meeting, they at least see what happens. And that's easy enough. I know we've been, we, the township's been posting, you know, the Zoom links, but from an access perspective, it should be crystal clear, in my opinion, fully live, no virtual meetings effective in July.
And my, my personal preference would be back to the way it was pre-COVID as soon as possible. Would really like to see it go back to, go into effect in July. And although your pontifications are appreciated on some of these other items, where it does seem that there was, there's a positive to having some of the electronic stuff up on the screen, I kind of like that, but I do not want any of the electronic pontification or technical manipulations that we may have to go through delay us getting back to no Zoom in July. That's at least my inclination and my desire. I know I don't necessarily have the authority to hit the gavel and make it so, but at least, you know what my sentiment is. Board members, by all means, chime in, but I'm definitely in favor of moving forward with your recommendation, Mr. Gertner.
I absolutely agree. As a board member, the way it used to be was the way of life, the way it was. And like the chairman had stated, when they presented, they showed up on the screen, that was the one positive thing in regards to what we were looking at. But other than that, I'd like to see it go back. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to jump ahead, I think, I've learned this, too, through a lot of these virtual meetings. Silence sometimes could be viewed as acceptance of that, of that recommendation. So I think for members of the public who happen to be participating virtually now, you should be made aware that effective the July meeting, the meeting will be fully live, there'll be no Zoom link available to, for public participation virtually. As to the other issues, I, everything else I articulated are sideline issues or additions, and that things can be worked through, the technology.
If I, if I may, just a suggestion and a thought for the future, when we have an application where the audience, the attendance is over the capacity of this room, we've, in the past, gone to the high school, would we consider Zoom at that time, or approach it as a need-be basis?
Respectfully, I would ask, I've also learned incrementalism, I don't know if that's age or the, or the age of where we find ourselves, but incrementalism sometimes has a lot of value. So I would like to, the common term is "put" that question at this point. Let's, let's achieve victory by reopening.
Hundred percent. I agree with the chair, hundred percent, absolutely.
There are problems with public participation virtually. If for no other reason, then the legislature has failed to do its job. I mean, it's as simple as that. You know, they, they allowed these, they and the governor allowed, I am pontificating again, I want to make that clear, speaking for myself, but they and the governor allowed the, you know, Division of Community Affairs to articulate vague guidelines, not even regulations, about this functioning. But the Open Public Meetings Act doesn't have a specific allowance for the virtual meetings. We've been operating under the pandemic rules, and that's not a good thing to do as we're coming, as, as the world is coming out of that. Legislature has a job to do, they ought to do it.
Any other comments from the board? We're good?
I just wanted to say.
Yes, we're good.
My only concern here is that if we go beyond what is required by the Minnesota Land use law, by letting the public know that we may have some technology that is available, that can be presented in advance, and we either may not require it, but if we request it, my only concern that is, if it's not provided and we don't require it, it's going to be an issue in the future. And, you know, applicants, objectives to applicants will find an issue someplace, and that could be a potential issue. I would just be a little concerned about the extent of that.
You, you mean in terms of potentially having the PDF available early and that kind of thing? Well taken. All right.
Good, good.
All right, thank you. So, yes, Mr. Chairman, so I really have a number of announcements to make, and I guess it's best to go in order. Mr. Pfeffer is here regarding application number three on the agenda, WSMP, Use Variants 3316. The board is aware, we're in receipt of correspondence from Mr. Lyons, who's their engineer, but I'll turn the matter over through the chair to Mr. Pfeffer.
Good evening, Mr. Pfeffer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. We were before the board of, maybe about a month ago, there was an issue raised. This is where there are two separate lots, the one house, the property actually is over the line. There was a suggestion made that we go back and see if we could talk to the lender to see if we can get a lot line adjustment due. We started that process. In the meantime, I'm happy to report that the parties have met and they've agreed upon a price to sell. Now, the good news is that we don't have to amend our application. Our application already included both lots because the house was on both properties. This was a bifurcated application just for a used variance. We'd have to come back at a later time for the site plan. However, now that we have both, now we have an agreement and we're actually looking to use the whole property and we'll have to do a, obviously, a lot consolidation later on, I would like an opportunity to speak with the board's professionals, have my engineer, we'll have a technical review meeting, so we could address any issues. There are a couple, obviously, there's two houses now on the property. I think there's, I believe both houses have a shed. I believe the other property has a pool. We don't need a long period of time. I just would like an opportunity to properly vet out those issues before we come to the board and make all of our arguments. So respectfully, I would ask for a short, either two or four weeks, just enough time so we could have professionals talk, have that meeting, and then come back before the board. Like I said, both lots are already included in the application, and it is a bifurcated application. So I think a lot of that should move away, and the good news is that we, we are coming very close to being conforming. Obviously, we're still going to be for the board because the biggest issue is that it's a two-acre requirement, and I believe we're approximately 1.8 some acres.
So, so, Mr. Pfeffer, just for the public as well, a couple of things. One, I, if I may attempt to speak for the board as a, as an entity, I'm certain that the board appreciates the fact that you took some initiative and, and advice based on the conversations to just simplify some of the issues by acquiring the lot. That does raise other issues, and I do want to, the idea of becoming more conforming, may become more conforming in one instance, but if you have two primary uses on one consolidated lot, that creates other issues. I also understand, and I'm going to share a conversation that you and I had earlier, you're not sure, first of all, the contract's not signed yet.
Correct.
So you're making a representation that you're hopeful, you're 98% there, but not 100, because we don't want to have any presumptions. Anything can happen.
Yes.
And that's, you know, for the public and on your behalf as well. Secondarily, because of that, you made a representation to me, I want to place it on the record, that you can't sit here and tell the board today as to what your client actually does want to do with that other property once they're under contract, which would, if I, I'm going to share the conversation, make it difficult to present a proposal today because even if you were comfortable in representing, you had the both lots, you don't know what sort of variance you may be asking for because it depends on what your client ultimately wants to put forward. Is that correct?
That is 100% correct, and I do believe we'll be able to get those answers, though, in a very short period of time, and that's why I-
So, so, Mr. Chairman, my respectful recommendation would be to move, because there is, we understand there have been a number of people, it's been carried along, that this matter be carried to the August 4, 2021 meeting without the requirement of further notice. I would ask, though, just from a timeline perspective, respectfully, that you begin coordinating even tomorrow, the, the tech meeting-
Yes.
-that we have so that we can, I, and what I would like to be able to do is at least report to the board. If the meeting hasn't been held yet, I would like it at least scheduled so that I can make that announcement on the 16th, so the public is aware that this matter is, is moving.
No issue with that, and the board's professionals are actually very available, they're very responsive to the requests for the meetings. The later application, you'll see here in a few minutes, we just asked for a meeting and we've already scheduled it as of, earlier today for a different application. So I'll reach out tomorrow, I'll get everyone on an email to figure out what date and time works, and we'll get that scheduled, and, Mr. Gertner, you'll be on those emails, so you'll have the confirmation.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, question. Have notices gone to property owners within 200 feet of both lots?
Yes, because as, as you may recall, both lots are part of the applic-, it was a little bit of a, of a complicated issue. Both lots are part of the application, but we were only seeking the use for the one. That's why you had, you had indicated we should probably look to move the lot line. And while I appreciate, Mr. Gertner, indicating that no notice would be necessary, I probably will renotice anyway for the August 4 meeting as we are now, at this point, going back to live meetings, and I want to, and I want to cover because at this point, both lots are included for the whole project. I have no problem agreeing to do that renotice.
Well, certainly if the variances change, you would have to renotice anyway. So you know what? I, I think if you don't mind, given that and listening to you, I think that we should, with your assent, we'll mark the agenda that notice will be required.
Yes, I have no problem doing the notice. I was going to do it as a, but it's a caution because, like I said, while the properties have not changed, I'm afraid the scope may have changed a little bit. I don't want to have an issue later on, so I have no issue with renotising.
So for members of the public who are on application number three, Use Variants 3316, WSMP, that matter will be carried to the August 4, 2021 meeting. The applicant will provide notice pursuant to law.
And he is waived time, yes.
Mr. Pfeffer?
Yes.
You've been here a lot, and I, you understand that I'm not particularly in favor of, and I only speak for myself, not for this board, not in favor of bifurcated applications.
Yes.
If you're going to bifurcate the application for the use variance, please at least include some type of a concept site plan.
Understood.
Without that, I'm, you know, I'd be reluctant to make any, any kind of a decision on the use variance, not knowing what circulation patterns are going to be like, things of that nature. I don't need a full-blown engineered site plan, but a concept plan would be helpful.
Fully noted, and our engineer is on Zoom, Mr. Lyons is available, he's hearing it, and I will make sure to follow up, and we will get, once I know what we're looking to do, we'll get a concept, and like I said, we'll have to come back anyway for the full site plan, but we'll work on some kind of a concept.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Pfeffer, you can hang there, but I, I think for the public, we should probably go in order of the agenda. So, next, members of the, public members of the board, application number four, KKK, KV Investments LLC, Preliminary Final Site Plan 834. They have asked that this matter be carried to the July 21, 2021 meeting without the need for further, for further notice. This is their first agenda request. I would presume no objections, again, through, through the chair. And then, Mr. Pfeffer, I guess you could pop up again since you're here. Application number five, they've also asked for a, a request for an adjournment. Again, they want to take advantage of what the board is, board professionals have started to do with these tech meetings, to be a little bit better prepared, but I'll let Mr. Pfeffer address the matter.
Again, good evening, Mr. Pfeffer.
Good evening, Adam Pfeffer, standing behind the applicant. Exactly what Mr. Gertner indicated. We received the letters last week. We reviewed them. We had a meeting with our team. We said, "Look, we want to address some of these questions that are being raised." We reached out to the professionals. We have a meeting scheduled, I believe it's June 8th already, so we plan to be able to address, hopefully, as many of their concerns as possible, and we come back with the board, have a much cleaner dialogue.
And I believe this matter could also be carried to the July-
21st?
21st meeting. Again, without the need for, for further notice, first adjournment request. So for members of the public, application number five, Miles 2 LLC, Preliminary Final Site Plan 833 with Use Variants 3360, that matter's being carried to the July 21, 2021 meeting, without the requirement for the notice. The applicant is waived time.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You, too. Take care.
And, Mr. Chair, the only thing is, given schedules, I'd like the board, I had passed out material at the last meeting, at some point, we should have an executive session to, to discuss that, and it may be better to try to do that early.
Let's do it as early as possible.
I can't really flip to it.
No, well, not today.
Yeah.
I'm saying the next possible meeting.
Could do it on the-
Why not do it on the, the 16th?
Well, you know what may be better, Mr. Chairman, is to do it on that July meeting because it's reorg anyway, so sometimes there already is an executive session.
Try 21st, it is. All right. So we will do an executive session on July 21st on the reorg meeting. All right.
And that isn't all that I'm aware of.
That's all that you have? All right. Well, in that case, as we move through it, we down to the applications, but before we begin those, I would like to have our professionals sworn and introduce yourselves for the record, please.
Each of you have raised your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments about present honor before the board, represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Whoever wants to lead off.
Okay.
Jeffrey Puporo, zoning officer.
Ernie Eders, board plan.
Evan Hill, board engineer.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you. All right, with that, we can begin. So we have our first applicant, Toby and Eliezer Shane, Variance 3371.
Mr. Shane, if you'd raise your right hand, except get in front, please get in front of the mic. Do you solemnly affirm that the information, questions, comments, or testimony you're about to present before the board shall represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please?
Eliezer, E-L-I-E-Z-E-R, middle initial Z, last name is Shane, S-H-A-I-N.
Good evening, Mr. Shane.
Good evening.
You see, you have an application before us tonight. You're looking to put forth a 10-by-12 shed at zero feet to the side yard property lines, where 10 feet minimum is required, and you're also proposing a six-foot in-height solid fence in the front yard area of the corner lot. Can you tell us more about the fence and where exactly you want to put it?
The reason for the fence, it's a six-foot fence. I want to put it exactly where I have a gate there right now, a four-foot gate. The reason for that is, two reasons. First of all, because I have watched my three-year-old, five-year-old more than once climb up the four-foot gate, and before you knew it, they're on the side, which I feel is, you know, a safety matter. And also, I have also been in the backyard a few times watching my children, and I see the way a bypasser, a total stranger, all of a sudden starts to engage my children in a conversation, telling them how cute they are, how they, how pretty they are, which I feel, so it's a very, it's a safety, if I have a four-foot, a six-foot fence, will take care of these problems.
Mr. Shane, I'm going to direct your attention to the screen, and you can see what's highlighted in yellow.
Yes.
Is, is that where you wish to put the six-foot vinyl fence?
Yes.
All right. But then it stops along the backyard. Are you proposing to stop where that yellow stops and then just leave the chain-link fence the rest of the way?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I, I went out and took a look at your, your property, and, and what I noticed was that chain-link fence, although it appears on this document, this, that was, this plan of survey, when you look at the document, it looks like that chain-link fence that is there now is right on the property line, but it seemed to be a couple of feet off the sidewalk.
Yes.
And so I couldn't reconcile that, but I guess my question to you is, is it your intention to put the solid white fence exactly in the same place as where the, the chain-link fence is now?
100%, yes.
All right. And then in the back, the back left corner that you have, well, it's kind of highlighted on the screen, it's in red, that's where you want to put your shed?
Correct.
All right. There's no shed there now. It looks like there's a coop back there.
Yes.
It's a coop? All right. The, the only problem that I saw, Mr. Shane, is, is putting it right on that property line, I think, is, is not wise. I think that's a problem. And I think you, you've got enough contour in the backyard where you could move it off that property line a little bit, maybe two or three feet from the side, two or three from the back, and it would leave you some room to negotiate it. If you needed to repair something, you would be on your property. Just makes ease of access all around your shed a lot easier. Would you be open to that kind of a suggestion?
Yes, 100%.
The shed that you're intending to put back there, it's for just storage of tools-
Bikes, lawnmower.
All right. You don't intend to run electricity out there, there's nothing, no key, nothing like that, correct?
No.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
Is, excuse, food board. Is that shed existing before you bought the home?
No, it's not there now. There is no shed.
There's no shed?
That's correct.
Well, what's the hardship of reasons why it has to be zero? Why can't you set it back a little bit off the property line?
He already, he already agreed to move it off.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't speak loudly. I'm, I'm sorry, Scotty.
Okay. So you're saying that your son was climbing up on the four-foot fence?
Yes.
And that's why you needed a six-foot fence? Well, what about the other side?
The neighbor. The reason, that's the reason why I'm going until there, because after that, it's my neighbor's backyard. So if they climb, at least it's the neighbor and not the, the street or driveway.
So you got a six-foot fence going to a four-foot fence, the neighbor's fence?
Sorry?
It's a six-foot fence that you're asking for?
Yeah.
Going into a four-foot fence?
There's a, there's a four-foot fence-
Existing.
Existing. I'm taking the four- I'm taking the four-foot fence away and I'm putting a six-foot fence there.
Why don't you explain the transition of the, of the rear of the property from where the six-foot fence ends to the four-foot fence? I think that's what he's talking about.
Well, the reason for that is because that's where my neighbor's backyard starts. So if a child climbs over, he's not going to the street, he's going into my neighbor's backyard.
Understood. Got it?
Yeah, got it. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question. Is the existing fence, the chain link fence, is that on your property or your neighbor's property?
My property.
Yes.
I feel that this issue has had one or two, four things to do. So if you can turn the back out of your driveway, because if you have the back out of your driveway, you're only going to cut off the last of the block.
Good hearing, Dean. Are you going to have enough visibility backing out onto Rutgers Road with only one foot?
You're, you're anticipating Evan's exact comment. He was worried about the same thing you are, Ms. Fitch. You guys are on the same wavelength.
So, yes, we, I was going to point that out. We've had similar applications on smaller lots like this where, where the four-foot fence previously existed, it was right up against the property line all along the driveway. And because it was an open fence and it was a lower fence, it was not a line of sight issue. It did not impede the backing out of your driveway, you could see over them. A six-foot solid fence is different, obviously. So we do have to be mindful if somebody's backing out of this driveway right immediately adjacent to a six-foot fence, that a portion of that vehicle is going to be encroaching into the road before the driver can see what's either walking down the sidewalk or what's coming in the road. So we have requested other applicants in very similar applications like this to re, to move the six-foot fence further off the property line such that a vehicle can safely exit the driveway if backing up. My, my recollection in those cases have been that the board has asked the fence to be located anywhere from ten to twelve feet off the property line in order to accommodate a vehicle backing up.
Mr. Hill, I'd like to, I guess, focus this question, question to you. I, I went out there and I took a look, all right, I took a look at this. And, and I think his property configuration is somewhat similar to mine in that there's a, there's a curb on Rutgers Road, then there's an intermediate dirt, and then you get to the sidewalk. And so his, he does, his property line does not encompass the sidewalk, that intermediate dirt, or that curb. His property line would be just, just inside that, inside that sidewalk. So when, when I have to face this, this very problem, and my property is, is on Larson Road, the way I avoided it so that I could back out carefully is I actually took my, my six-foot vinyl fence and I moved it in three feet from the, from the actual property line. So I was about three feet in from that sidewalk edge. And I noticed on yours, your, your four-foot chain link is in a little bit, but it's not in three feet. And so I think if you bring that in at least three feet to four feet, he'll be able to back, well, his car will not be into the driveway. He will be able to look down that road and he'll, he'll have a clear sight line. So at least from what I saw and my perception, I think to be on the safe side, you should be at least three feet in, possibly four would even be better from the sidewalk, which is, which is where your property line would be. Ian, does that, does that make any sense to you, Mr. Hill?
It does, it does. And, 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 and most of the properties in, in the Brookwood section, the distance from the edge of pavement to the property line averages about five to six feet. So our, the property line is, is six feet off of the edge of pavement. And the reason why we've recommended in the, in the past ten-foot is if you're in a, think of it if you're, if you're parked in a parking space, right? And you have a very large SUV next to you. Well, parking space is twenty feet long. You're at, you're sitting at about the four-to-five-foot mark. So we, we, that's where fifteen feet comes up, right? The fact that you already have that six feet, now you're down to about nine, ten, ten feet. Ten. Now, the other option you could do is too, you could, you could angle the fence such that it's more of a triangular configuration where if you look at the top right corner of the page, which is the back, which is the rear right corner, that portion of the fence can stay there and you can move the portion, the corner closest to the driveway in five or six feet, like you suggested. And that way, you know, it's not a squared-off fence, but it does give you adequate line of sight.
Mr. Shane, any of that make sense to you?
Yes, I'll tell you the truth, I'm living in the house for three years and I don't think there was ever a time that I went into the driveway. I always back in first, even without a white fence, for safety. So I always, every single time I pull in, I don't think there was ever a time I pulled into my driveway front. I was always pulling backwards like this. When I come out, I come out, you know, it's just safer that way.
But we can't be sure that everybody is going to do exactly what you do.
Hundred percent.
And so we do have to be cognizant of that danger. So I, I think what I'm hearing from the board and protecting Ms. Fitch is, is that you move, you know, you, you move that fence that you want to have run along Rutgers Road, you know, so you're a total of about ten feet in from the pavement, about at least four feet in from your property line. Ms. Fitch, is that, am I capturing what your, what your, what your concern or your intent is there?
Yes.
Is, is that, is that something that you can consent to, because being four feet in from your, from that, from the property line? Four feet in?
If that's what you feel is the safest, so.
I think that's, I think that's what we are exactly feeling, especially in light of the engineer's testimony.
Okay.
Any further comments or questions?
Just a clarification of, of statement on the shed. What was agreed to as to the distance from the property line?
Three feet.
On each side?
Anything further, board members? Nothing further, professionals, anything further? Nothing, any further testimony, Mr. Shane?
And what was, what were they saying about to make it slanty? I wasn't sure if that was.
I think Mr. Hill was proposing another possible solution. Mr. Hill, you want to rearticulate that alternate solution?
So right now, the board is considering moving, and has asked you if you'd be, if you consider moving your fence four foot off your property line, which would be four feet back from where your existing fence is. The other option would be, if the board wanted to consider it, keep the rear right corner at the property line and essentially angle the fence so it's four foot off of the property line at your driveway. So, you know, it's, it's a, a more of a triangular portion so you can, you have a better line of sight that way. So that, that's an option if the board wanted to consider or not.
Do you have a preference, Mr. Shane?
So I could keep the fence where it is, just by my driveway? I should angle it, is that, is that?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think just to simplify it, which you've done in the past also, is I, I'm going to presume that the applicant.
Mr. Hill's willing to show.
Well, but, hang on, that the, please, that the applicant wants to maintain as much of his property as possible.
Right.
So what the board has done in the past is if the, so long as the applicant accedes to maintaining a line of sight at a minimum of four feet at an angle to be approved administratively by the board engineer, you'll ver, you, you can show him where it would go? And can we put it in a resolution? Can I, okay. Then, then that would be, you know, because it's a safety issue, that's all.
From four feet to a slanty. Yeah, I think I'll rather that, the second option, to make it slanty.
Was he inclined to go that way, Evan?
Yes.
Oh, then you got to make sure we understand.
So if you're looking at the diagram up on the computer screen, which you also have in front of you, if you look at the rear right corner of the fence where it was proposed, that is going to stay at the property line. And then instead of being along the property line, if you, once you get to the driveway, it's going to be four foot in from the property line. You're going to draw a line from that four-foot mark to the rear right corner. So it's going to be a little triangular area there instead. That'll provide adequate line of sight.
And, and the, I'm sorry, for clarification, the fence will abut the driveway?
It'll be four foot off of the property line along the driveway.
Along the driveway, so it will abut the driveway for like?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. But four foot off of the front property line.
Right.
Does it ever meet the property line again, along Rutgers Road?
Yeah, in the back corner, back right corner.
So I need to show you the picture?
So he's not angling the fence this way.
Go ahead, show.
Yeah.
She doesn't believe it.
I think he's going to like angle it like this, but it's not, okay. Okay.
This just isn't the scale.
Thank you.
But the record will reflect, it ends up forming, the line ends up forming a triangle from the northeast corner, where it'll end up being four feet at the driveway, four feet back in the property line.
Yeah. Is, is, that's the way you'd like to go with it, Mr. Shane?
Yes.
All right. Any further questions from the board? Nothing further, professionals, nothing, Mr. Shane, anything further from you? We're good? All right, then I'm going to close this section of the meeting, I'll open it to the public. All right, Anthony, is there anybody out there? All right, is Tracy, you want to be heard? Tracy was there. Still nothing, Anthony? All right, so she was the only one, there's, there's no one else there? Okay. All right, in that case, I close the public portion. All right. Board members, it's ours. Further deliberations or motion?
Motion to approve, as per the testimony, we'll start with the shed. That'll be three feet from the property lines on both the east and north side of the shed where it abuts the properties. So it'll be three feet into the property. With regards to the fence line, the vinyl fence as proposed, but it will open up the sight line where the, the northeast corner of the rear property will be the start point of the vinyl fence. As it works towards the driveway, it'll set back a, a total of four feet. So when it meets the driveway, it should be set back four feet from the property line. Is that, is that clarification, is that good?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Brokaw.
Mr. Giscanzo?
Yes.
Ms. Fitch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. McElhany?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Application's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shane.
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right, Paul Fornicola, Whitechill Road, variance three, three, four, seven.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Salvatore Alferi, on behalf of the applicant. We were here last in March and we had completed our direct testimony at that time. There were a couple of things that we had agreed to on the record that I'm going to summarize. But one of the things I promised you was that the mechanic would be here tonight to answer questions, which is the reason we're here at, at all, is because this mechanic use is not a permitted use in his own. And we'll call him up momentarily. But we did agree that any approval that this board were to grant for this application, we would also have to get approval from Tom's River. They're about to file an application with Tom's River. We agreed that we would work with Jackson or Tom's River so that one of those towns would take jurisdiction to, to monitor what's going on, so it's not a split jurisdiction. Evan had asked that we agree to install a fence at the wetland line, which we agreed that we would do. And other than that, it was just general testimony. Ian, I, I didn't handle the first night of testimony, another attorney did, but Ian Borden was here at the last meeting as well and he finished his testimony. And as I said earlier, Mr. Clifton, who is the owner of the mechanics business, is present and we're ready to call him up so he can testify and then answer any questions the board has.
Thank you.
Mr. Clifton, you're raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments about present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation or address?
John Clifton, C L I F T O N, and Clifton Diesel Repair at five thirty-four Whitechill Road, Jackson.
Yeah, Mr. Clifton, we, it's terrible to hear acoustically. So you, you'd have to hold that mic up and speak as clearly as you can.
All right.
Even closer.
I'm John Clifton, C L I F T O N, and Clifton Diesel Repair at five thirty-four Whitechill Road, Jackson.
You want to stand or sit, however, what's more comfortable for you?
Doesn't matter.
You may wind up sitting, you know, as things go on, we'll see. So you indicated the name of your business. How long has your business been operating at this location?
Two years.
And can you describe generally with the board, for the board, what is your business? What do you do there?
We're a diesel repair shop. We do anything from brakes to motors and body swaps and we do hydraulics. Pretty much anything that has to do with a diesel vehicle, we do.
The, what are your hours of operation?
Nine to five. Sometimes it runs till six on the summer days when it's a little light, a little longer.
And what days of week do you operate?
Monday through Friday, occasionally Saturday, but we try not to.
How many employees do you have at onsite during your peak operation?
It's me, my brother, and then we have two employees.
And can you explain to the board what, how you handle fluids that are, that result from either repairs or storage of fluids when you need them for repairs?
We have an account with Safety Clean and they remove any, we pay a fee every month. They remove any waste oil or antifreeze or any kind of chemicals or fluids that come out of a motor or a vehicle. We pay, they are removed through Safety Clean. We also purchase their absorbent, oil absorbent mats. They do not absorb water, but they, they absorb any kind of oils or anything in case there's a spill. Fuel, they absorb it all. Try to take precaution with anything along those lines.
And do you store any equipment onsite? And if so, where do you store it?
Equipment to do work?
Any, what, either, either, either?
Vehicles.
Yeah, vehicles.
There's a few in the shop and then we have some outside too.
And do you have any tow trucks in your business?
No.
So if a vehicle has to be towed to your facility, how does, how is that arranged?
The customer would have a, call a tow truck company and the tow truck company would bring the vehicle there.
And do the tow truck companies normally call you in advance to tell you the truck's coming?
They don't. Sometimes, there have been times where I've come in the morning and there has been a truck there that I didn't know about, that a customer, I guess, broke down in the middle of the night and had the tow truck bring it right to the shop. But I am informed of whose it is, what it is. First thing in the morning, we do have a drop box where if that happens, that you drop the keys in the drop box and we go from there.
And if the board were to approve this application, would you agree that? And if the board were to approve this application, would you agree that no dismantled vehicles will be stored outside for any period of time other than to, to work on them and then have them removed?
Yes.
So you, they don't want a junkyard there?
No, of course not.
And then would, in terms of your business operation, if this were approved, no site improvements are proposed, you're not looking to expand the parking lot or add to the building or anything, is that correct?
No.
And approximately how large is the area that you rent? Do you know the square footage?
I don't know the square footage, but we have about four vehicles wide off the building, and about three vehicles deep.
All right.
Not to say that it's all filled, but that's about, that's the area that we have gone over and agreed on that I can use.
And then do you have office space in there as well?
No, I do not.
So it's just a garage?
Yes.
Okay, and then one final question about fumes. Are there any fumes that are generated as a result of your normal business operation? And if so, how are, how, can you describe it and describe how it can be controlled?
Nothing to excess, like nothing excessive, it's a normal fume, you know, a car running or anything like that. Anything that gets drained out of a vehicle goes right into a waste drum that gets removed, and the drums, you can't, you can stand right next to it, you can't smell anything coming out of the drum. They're all, everything is, the Safety Clean gave us their, they, we paid to have containers brought there specifically for these chemicals, for these, these liquids.
Okay.
We're not, we're not just putting them in like, you know, anything. These are, kind of, containers are made for this.
And that's what typically is used in most of these mechanic shops, right?
Yes. That's what Safety Clean does, is that's how they, you know what I mean, that's what they're for, is for these kind of situations, for any kind of chemicals or waste or any liquids, they're, they properly dispose of them.
Okay. I know the board had, may have other, I know that you, you have some family history, so you, Mr. Chair, you may have more detailed questions.
Thank you, Mr. Alferi, I do, I do have some questions. Mr. Clifton, I, I don't know if you were out there the other day when I came out, I made a site visit. I, I wanted to see what the operation looked like. And I don't want you to misinterpret my questions in that I have some negative concept of diesel mechanics. My dad was a diesel mechanic, I appreciate that kind of work, I've worked on cars, so I have a particular sensitivity to it, but I have a concern that this isn't the right site. And so first, I, I'm going to ask you about what I saw, and if what I saw is correct. So when I went out to the site, and this is at 534, that's currently where you've been operating for the last two years, did I hear that right?
Yes.
All right. And, and as I walked, I walked the site, the very, the very last bay that I came to was number seven. Is number seven the bay that you were working out of?
Yes.
All right. So that is, that is one great big long rectangular bay.
Yes.
So there's no way you're going to pull four vehicles into that bay sideways. You can pull one in lengthwise, but by my quick pacing, you're maybe 20 feet wide, but you're quite long. You have an opening at the front of the bay, great big tall, and then there's an opening at the back end.
Yes.
And you had two guys working, and the inside of that bay was, was already laden with material from either a car that was broken down, or that, where there were parts strewn about, but that's your bay, that's number one, correct?
Yes.
That's the bay that you're talking about, okay. Number two is I also got access to another section of that building looking for you, which I think was number four, where I walked up a ramp. When I walked up that ramp, I came across two gentlemen working on cars, they had two lifts, they were traditional hydraulic lifts, and at first I thought that was a restoration, but it really isn't a restoration. There's another auto repair business going on in that same location. Was my observation correct based upon your?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then as I, as I walked the outside of your, outside of your lot, you had two hardworking guys there. And what I thought is I saw they're on the ground, these are hardworking dudes on the ground, but fortunately it was a summer day. Now, in the winter, you guys are going to be working on diesel, on diesel vehicles outside? There's no way you're getting more than one diesel truck inside that bay. Now, diesel trucks that you had out in the back, I don't know if they're yours or not, are they? Are they tagged for you to work on? There's a lot of, I saw in the back, just from observation, I saw various construction cranes way out in the back, I saw at least 10 huge diesel type of dump trucks, other diesel vehicles strewn all along the back. Those are not your vehicles, correct?
No.
All right. Are they your vehicles to work on? Are they there slated for you to work on?
No, there's another company that rents, there's actually two other companies that rent, spacing back. I do do their mechanic work, but they're not there for me to do. That's where they park every night.
Now, the other thing that I looked for and I didn't see, is I saw no heavy duty hydraulic equipment in your garage, I didn't see any oxy, oxygen, acetylene torches, I saw no welding equipment, I saw no major compressors for, to do heavy duty compression work, to deal with brakes, I saw no overhead, no overhead lifting jacks with chains to remove engines. Did I miss it, or, or was it there?
We have, we do have welder, and we went to, we do weld, and we have a hot works permit from Jackson Fire Department. Oxygen and acetylene, we have a service truck, my brother does a lot of road calls onsite, and the oxygen and acetylene's on the truck. He has a, and our air compressor is on a, what's called shelving, it's up high for doing any work like that. And we do have hydraulic jacks, you know, air, air powered hydraulic jacks for the trucks. I don't have a lift in the shop because a lot of the diesel trucks, they're too big to put on a lift. And the lift you would need to lift one of them trucks is very, very expensive, and it's just, we're not there yet.
So would I be wrong if I, if I said that a lot of the work that you're doing on these vehicles, you're doing outside?
Only if the vehicle can't fit in the shop, or if we have two vehicles, like as of right now, I'm sure you saw the other day, we have a vehicle in the shop right now that I'm doing a motor on. So as of right now, there's that vehicle getting the motor done on, and you could pull one vehicle in behind that. And then up next to the side door, we would pull a vehicle up, and you can do, you know, we break jobs, certain things like that.
You know, you, you, I see that you guys are doing a lot of hard work, if you're, you know, if you're draining oil and you're pulling stuff out, you're working outside, you're working on ground. I saw nothing to capture this oil, I saw nothing to deal with spills outside. Now, it, it just seems that you're really trying to make the best out of a, out of not such a great location. It would be much better if that facility was more suitable to the type of sophisticated mechanical work that you're doing. Are, are you, are you a certified diesel mechanic?
I'm not certified. I'm a certified welder, and I haven't, I don't have a certification for doing diesel mechanic work, but I've worked in multiple shops. Coast Cities up in Neptune, I worked, I worked in, my brother worked in front end shop in multiple different, he used to work for Clayton, and we've been around, I've been doing diesel work since I was 15 years old.
Are you, are any of your employees certified diesel mechanics?
One of them is.
Would that, you said that, was that your brother or one of the others?
One of the others.
He's, he's on full time for you?
He, he leaves three days out of the week, he leaves at three o'clock. But other than that, he's for the most part full time.
And, and then the statement of operations, it was a revised statement of operations that was presented to us. It lists these things that, that you're doing. Engine diagnostics and tune-up, engine oil change and lube, engine repair and replacement?
Yes.
Brake repair, cooling system maintenance and repair, electrical system repair, differential maintenance and repair, transmission repair and replacement, and exhaust repair and replacement. You have an expertise in all of those areas despite the fact that you're not certified to do it?
I, an expertise for, I'm not, I didn't go to school for it, but I've been doing this all my life.
You have the knowledge, through experience.
Yes.
All right. I have no further questions at this time. Anybody else have any other questions?
I think you covered a lot. Mr. Clifton, thank you for coming out, what do you request? I'm sorry. Okay, James, go ahead. Mr. Clifton, I just have a, a question or two. Initially, you testified that you do diesel repair, you've been there for two years, and you have two employees. And then I thought you said it was you and your brother.
Me and my brother, and then we have two employees. My brother, my brother's mainly on the road all day. He doesn't, he's not at the shop, so it's me at the shop and two employees.
Okay, so it's you and your brother and two others?
Yes.
Okay. I have no further questions. Through the chair. I think the chairman covered a lot of the information that we wanted to get from you. Thank you for coming out today, Mr. Clifton, okay? It's important. My concerns are when the door is closed, there's a door, right? You have a door?
Yes.
When the door is closed and you have the truck running inside, you know, how are you evacuating the carbon monoxide?
We do have a carbon monoxide detector in case, but we do have an exhaust fan with two vents at each end of the shop.
All right, so when it's raining, the guys are not working outside, they're working inside?
Yes.
And you've accommodated the safety of these individuals that are working under these circumstances?
Yes, and as I said, there's a detector too, in case it were to get higher than, and we, we try not to run a vehicle in the shop. I really, I don't like it to run a vehicle in the shop with the door shut. Even if it's raining out and you got to run a vehicle, we still open the door. But there is an exhaust fan and two vents at each end to pull in fresh air and push out any kind of toxins.
That's why I wanted to ask you, how safe do you feel you are in this location? Be honest with me.
I've been there two years, and I've never been hurt. I feel, I feel perfectly safe. I've never had a problem, never been hurt, any of my guys have never been hurt.
Do you think there's anything additional that can be done to prevent any circumstance that may come up that could help you with this location?
I mean, we eventually, once we get there, like I said, we've only been at this location for two years, so I would like to get to a bigger shop eventually, but as of right now, financially, it's not in the cards, but...
One more question before I let you go. How many trucks do you bring in at one time that are sitting out there in the parking lot that you'll be working on?
As of right now, two. I have a truck in with the motor out of it in the shop right now, so I can only put in two, but three at any other time.
At maximum?
At max, in the shop. I can pull one in the side, I can nose one in the side and then pull two in the bay.
But you have other trucks that are outside waiting like the?
Yes.
How many of those trucks are outside?
Anywhere from, I have two machines, seven trucks, two trailers. It's like a revolving door, you know, they come in?
Hopefully, hopefully you get them out.
Yes, they're, within a week, they, it's like, you know what I mean, they go and more come in, go and more come in. I could empty the lot, and by the next noon the next day, it'll be full again. We have nonstop calls coming in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clifton.
So to, to my board member's point, he's, you've answered a lot of questions about what you have outside, and the concept is outside storage. It sounds like you have an awful lot of items stored outside the location. Do you, so besides the, the vehicles that you have stored out there, is there anything else stored out there? Do you have car parts, truck parts that are stored out there, new or used truck parts that are stored out there? Do you have any other equipment that's stored outside? What is, what is it that you are storing outside on a day-in, day-out basis related to this use?
Not as of, as of right now, there is, I have a motor on a stand and a transmission, but they all, we just, we have a spot, we're bringing them this week. I try not to leave too much outside, I try not to, I try to keep it neat, I try not to make it look like a junkyard. I don't want that, I don't want it to look like that. And we have two trucks that are my brother's that are stored there, that aren't a customer's that, they're his, you know, they don't go nowhere. Those two trucks stay there all the time. Other than that, they're in and out, trailers in and out, trucks in and out. I try not to store anything too long.
You're too big for that spot. You need more room. You need, you need another bay. I'm just, you know, I'm speaking out loud from what I see, you've got a lot going on There is, there seems to be, and I, I may ask Mr. Peters to, to elaborate on this. I mean, Mr. Peters, in, in your, in your December 17, 2020 letter, in particular item six, talks about industrial activities or processes that take place within a completely enclosed building. Does that apply to, to this intended use?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Okay. There's, there's no doubt in my mind that, that Mr. Clifford, a lot of Clifton, Clifton, right?
Clifton.
A lot of what Mr. Clifton is doing is not taking place inside the bay. A lot of it is taking place outside the bay, and there's also a lot of his equipment and trucks and whatnot are also outside the bay. And I'm wondering how that squares with your number six of your December 17, 2020 report.
The zone the project's located in has certain requirements to be a permitted use. And one of them is that all industrial activities or processes shall take place within a completely enclosed building. Incidental storage out of doors shall be shielded from any street or adjacent residential zone by fencing, landscaping, other appropriate measures. So to the extent that the repair is the activity, the repair occurring outdoors would simply not be a permitted use in the zone, which would be the reason they would need to be here for a, either conditional use or use variance application.
You currently are, you currently rent that bay from, I guess, Mr. Fornicola?
Yes.
Are you there on a lease now?
Am I there on a?
You've been there for two years, are you still there under a lease?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I? Mr. Clifton, you've been there for two years, do you know what, what was the use before you got there? Do you, you know?
Honestly, I don't, I don't know.
Anthony, is there a way you could put up the survey or plan on this? I was just going to ask Mr. Clifton to show the board members on the plan where he's storing the vehicle so they have a better understanding, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
That would be helpful.
So for the chair, actually, that actually leads me in to some of the prior conversations I've had with Ian at prior meetings. In addition to adding fence along the wetland buffer to ensure that there's no additional encroachment, not just of this use, but the site's use, right? Because that's where a lot of the complaints have come from.
The entire site.
It's the overall site, not necessarily Mr. Clifford. We've also asked for the portion of the building which requires the use variance, so this use should be delineated on the variance plan, right? If it's one bay, because it's, I'm not quite certain, is it, are you only in one bay, or do you have two bays?
We're in one bay.
One, okay. So the variance plan will need to be updated to show that there's one service bay, not two.
That's fine.
Okay. We also asked that the outside areas specific to the use variance be identified and delineated on the plan. All the other uses, to our knowledge, are permitted uses, and they're co-mingled as permitted uses. However, this being a use variance, we want to make sure that not only do we know which portion of the building is for the use variance, but which portion of the outside is being, is associated with the use variance as well.
That's fine. And, and, and Mr. Clifton's going, you ever use one of these?
One?
Yeah. You're going to, if you could show the board with this exact, exactly where you're?
Find where we're at.
I know.
Where's the building?
That's the building? And that's the profit, that's the township line?
All right, so we are, trying not to shake too much here. Here's the building, here's our one door, here's the other, this is our bay right here. I don't shake too much. Right here, this is our bay. We come out about 30 foot this way and up, not past the front of the building, and not 10 foot, we have, not past the back of the building, you cannot see anything from Whitechill Road. We've come about 30 foot off the building, up, about halfway up the building and back, this is area right here. That's what we have outside. And anything we work on outside gets pulled up right next to the building because we have a door, a garage door on the back right here, on the side, that we pull up right here. It's a paved, paved spot, so if anything were to spill, it's on pavement and we can absorb it. And we would pull the vehicle up right here to this back door. Other than that, anything out here? Other than that, anything out here is just waiting to come over to the shop. It's not, we try to do, and none, little as possible work out past the pavement.
Mr. Alferi, just an add by the chairman, and I appreciate Mr. Clifton's testimony.
Is it? Correct. Yes, and.
So would it therefore be. Helpful to this board to know exactly by resolution or agreement or meeting or some sort of writing? To know exactly what Tom's River will approve, so that whatever portion. This board has jurisdiction, over which this board has jurisdiction, we can, the board could file that way?
Yeah, and, and in my opening remarks, I, I said we're, they're going to be filing an application with Tom's River. I believe this week or within a week is what I was told, so yes, and that application is being filed.
And again, this is really for the board's ultimate determination. Just watch that testimony and listen to it. Most of that section of the building appears to be in Tom's River that he's using?
And then the, the bay, the main entrance bay is in Jackson though, right? The top of that.
Yeah, pretty much only about five foot of the front of our shop is in Jackson.
So the entrance is in Jackson, the rest of it's all in Tom's River?
Yes, yes.
What, what would the board be approving here?
Can we just make it subject to Tom's River's decision on the outdoor use? I mean, we can, we can approve, we can address those, that portion of the use that's in, in Jackson. But all of the portion that's outside of Jackson in, in Tom's River, we could just make it subject to whatever Tom's River decides relative to the outside use.
And, and that's one of the other things we had agreed to last meeting, that if this were approved there, any approval. Here would be conditioned upon Tom's River approving as well.
Well, I, I would say this, a little bit of a contrarian. When we, we're here last in March.
Yes.
Now June, why is it three months to make the application to Tom's River?
I, I can't, I can't answer that, yeah. I mean, the other alternative is if you, if you're reluctant to act until you see what Tom's River does, hold this in abeyance and let them go first. I mean, somebody has to go first, right? We can't do it the same night in two towns, so.
I mean, that's up to the board ultimately. It is certainly unique, right?
Yeah, whenever you have a site bisected with two towns, it becomes, especially devariance territory, it becomes unusual.
You know, arguably, maybe I should not have participated in this, because arguably, you know, understanding how the outside storage interacts. With the site does affect the board's deliberations over the intensity of the permission of the actual use inside the building.
Yeah, understood, and, and but.
But that supports determination.
Right, and by the same token, if Tom's River said no outside mechanics work could be done, then. Our application's kind of over here as well, unless we move the outdoor activities somewhere else on site, which means we'd have to come back here. For an amended application. But I can't, Mr. Borden advised me today, he couldn't be here for some, for a reason, I'm not sure what the reason is. So I don't, can't tell you why an application hasn't been, hasn't been filed, but I asked that question, that was the response within a week. And, and Judge Sida is, retired Judge Sida is Mr. Fornicola's lawyer in Tom's River. He's handling the Tom's River application.
So we have to make a decision at this juncture, it's going to go forward.
Mr. Chairman, it seems to me that we're, we're overcomplicating the issue before us. Because what we're really talking about is the, is it, it's a use variance here. And the use that impacts Jackson, I understand Mr. Gertner's position and he's correct. And that what happens outside in Tom's River, you know. Indirectly, not maybe directly, affects the, the, the inside of the building. But we're talking about from what the chairman had indicated, we're really talking about one functional bay here. And maybe being able to address one truck. Whatever he does outside is, is now Tom's River. I don't want to say we're passing the buck, but, you know, it's, it's a matter of making a decision over which we have jurisdiction and control. And everything else seems to be in Tom's River based on Mr. Clifton's description of, of, of the use. All of the activity that he outlined is on the other side, assuming that border is correct. All of that use is, is in Tom's River.
Do you know if that border was drawn by somebody in overpaint or is that something?
We actually heard testimony from Ian Borden before, and his surveyors. What I would suggest to the board is, make a suggestion to the board is. Currently, we've heard no testimony from, from the planner or the applicant that they perform outdoor service of vehicles in Jackson. All of that's done in, in, in Tom's River. So the board could, if they were going to make a decision, restrict the outdoor. Any outdoor activities associated with the use variance in Jackson Township, first and foremost, right? They would, if the board were to act favorably, they could impose that all of the use variance activities. Are, are, are contained within the building, right? And then delineate where that is. That way, I think that protects you from, than the town in a decision. And it also provides some guidance towards Tom's River, who will be hearing the, the balance of the application and their jurisdiction.
Would that use include the, the vehicles that are parked there, that?
Well, we, what we've heard tonight is that all outdoor activities, storage, repair. Associated with this use occurs in Tom's River.
Okay, so we're not.
Not in Jackson, so.
My, my, my broader question, there's testimony, there was other vehicles, not his, that parks there, so within that.
Those are all permitted uses and that's not part of this application. So, and I think, I think, I think the board, this site does have history. This, the, the owner of this site has some history and there are people in the public who believe that there's things going on at the site. We haven't heard testimony, any testimony, that it's as a result of this use and, 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 and what's being proposed here. I think those are separate issues from this application that need, that probably should be addressed at some point. But I don't believe they're paramount to his use here. But I would suggest to the board that you restrict, because nothing's been proposed, restrict any outdoor uses. I'm sorry, outdoor servicing or storage associated with this use in Jackson Township and limit it to the inside of the building only.
What was the last part?
Limited to inside the building only. And that's subject to the delineation. We still want to see the areas delineated on the, on a revised variance plan at some point. Right, for resolution compliance. But that should be consistent with the testimony, that nothing out, nothing that's occurring outside of the building is occurring in Jackson Township.
Let me ask a question about the inside of the building. And I don't know if, if, if this is something that could slip for another day or to the professionals. So for the sake of the argument that we're inclined to go along with the concept that you espoused to say inside. And, and he's ultimately granted a, a variance to do that. Does the township get involved at all in taking a look at the inside of that bay for the purpose of determining safety? Adequacy of ventilation, safety of what's going on inside that building?
My assumption would be that at the time that a certificate of occupancy was obtained for this tenant, there would have been an inspection done. So the question that the board may want to ask the applicant, and I believe the landlord is here as well. Is there a certificate of occupancy in place for this use?
That's the question.
And it's also my understanding that Fire Prevention does annual inspections. And they've been at my desk with this particular property, trying to seek who has approvals to be there. But they're still doing their inspections based on as if the uses were all permitted. So they're doing their individual inspections based on the use of the properties. And ideally, when this application gets completed, all the uses in there will be. On the books, so to speak, and they can do their inspections as they've been doing.
But, but what I'm hearing, and maybe I'm just reading between the lines, is if, if ultimately Mr. Clifford is given. A use variance to operate his, his, his diesel garage in there. It's now defined as to what he's going to do and what he's going to be doing inside that, inside that garage. So now when a township comes out, do they impose a standard inspection for those uses? I mean, does the inspection get up the notch, so to speak, to make sure he's in compliance with, with, with all of those requirements?
Yes, and each, yeah, the Fire Prevention will do their inspection based on the use. The Building Department will do their inspections based on the use and the proper separation from each particular use. So there could be a, you know, a one hour wall separation from a diesel mechanic to a upholsterer.
Then it would be subject to, I would. Mr. Alferi, you may have lost a little bit of what.
I just, just the end part.
Yeah, one of, one of the concerns that I had, Mr. Poforo and Mr. Hill were addressing is, assuming for the sake of the argument, the use variance is granted. The township will then come out and they would do their independent inspections of that particular bay. So that they can make certain that if it's operating as a diesel shop, as intended. There are certain requirements that are now going to be imposed and it would be subject to those, to those, to those inspections and requirements later on.
Yeah, understood, and, and whether, whether we needed a use variance or not, that would, that would be a condition of any occupancy. And Mr. Fornicola does say that fire officials from Jackson do inspect all the space in the building. But clearly, if this is granted, I was going to suggest two things. Number one is we send the resolution to Tom's River so that they see anything that you've imposed, they understand and they're not operating in a vacuum. And then number two is we could certainly give it to the fire official and ask him to come out inspected. It has to comply with the fire code, there's no issue.
Excuse me?
And he doesn't have a CO because he, this is holding up, he can't get a CO because it's not a permitted use. So. We're, it's the catch twenty-two now.
Any other questions, board members? Looking further, professionals, anything further? Anything further, Mr. Alferi?
Just the public, no, no testimony.
All right, then we'll close this section of the meeting and we will open it to the public. All right, is there anyone in the public that would like to be heard on this application? Okay. Mr. Smith, are you there? Yeah, I, I just see his initial, Anthony, I don't see him, oh, wait a minute.
Hi, Mr. Smith, how are you?
Okay, hopefully I'm not muted.
Yep, there you go. If you kindly raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony, information, questions or comments you have presented before the board and represent the truth? The whole truth is nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last?
Thomas Smith, S M I T H.
And your address, please.
Five two zero Whitechill Road in Jackson.
Just I want to make you understand, sir, there's a delay. And I'm saying that out loud for the board as well. Your mouth is moving about four seconds faster than your voice is being.
Okay, I don't know if that will make a difference.
Little bit better, but through the chair.
There is a delay, but we, we can work through it. All right. Mr. Smith, do you have any particular questions or comments on this application?
Could I just confirm with the board, I had correspondence from May third, twenty twenty-one. I just wanted to make sure that got to the board. I had emailed it in to Dawn. And she was going to distribute it, just had a list of questions or issues. Primarily dumping that's gone on at the site subsequent to the March third meeting. I just wanted to confirm that the board was in receipt of that.
Yeah, and I received a copy from Dawn. May third, May third, right?
Yes.
Okay, so our, I mean, our primary issue at, at the site is the dumping, the expanding, the filling of the wetlands. Mr. Bowden has testified previously that, you know, those areas inside the wetlands buffer have been removed and cleared out. They have not, I, you know, documented March fifteenth. Ten triaxial loads of material brought in and dumped. Some of it was by the APC paving truck that's on the site, so it's by that contractor. There were a bunch of C boxes placed, there's been significantly more clearing. Now granted, most of this is in the Tom's Riverside, but it's also on the Jackson property. In, in that lot, and that's where it's encroaches also inside the, the wetlands, the buffer limits. So that's our primary concern is that the dumping and filling and clearing has continued there.
I, I just want to rein it in a little bit. The, the focus of the hearing is on Mr. Clifford's ultimately being given a use variance. I mean, the application is by Mr. Fornicola, but for a use variance to operate a diesel mechanic out of this bay number seven. Is it your, is it your question to this particular applicant as it relates to this particular use? Regarding this dumping, I, I'm just, I'm struggling seeing the relationship.
Okay, yes, and this is not necessarily related to this diesel mechanic, but every previous hearing has been Mr. Bowden also saying, yes, we want the diesel mechanic, but then all the other uses, all the other tenants, all the other trucks and storage and contractors. And there's been multiple testimony that all of the uses on that property are people who have space in the building. And there are, there's multiple fleets of trucks and equipment out there. And like I said, our, our complaint is the filling and maybe not related to Mr. Clifton's operation, but. Mr. Bowden is, has been asking for this variance and you have also questioned him, like what are you asking for in these meetings? Because he's asking for, for multiple uses, like kind of a blanket use, and that's where all this clearing and filling is going on. And this is my only avenue to bring it up, and it is on the Jackson property. I've also brought it up through Tom's River. Mr. Bowden's testified repeatedly that he's got a, an application pending, and that's absolutely not even true, so. Tom's River just recently, within the last couple of weeks, issued additional violations for clearing and placement of C boxes back there, so. That's our issue. It's that he's asking for like a blanket use by all these multiple contractors. It's not the issue with Mr. Clifton's shop.
Mr. Alferi?
Only that if there are any violations of wetland encroachments or otherwise, that's an enforcement matter. Clearly, the applicant has to comply with that. This use, other than that limited outdoor activity in Tom's River, has, has no outdoor activity. So none of the complaints that this gentleman has relate to this use, but obviously to the site. And I know Mr. Borden's testimony was site specific because he was trying to put some proof on the record to support the devariance. But yeah, any enforcement issue has to be dealt with, we understand that.
Well, may I ask, through the chairman, Mr. Alferi, would you agree to address those enforcement questions prior to final resolution compliance? So that you're at a zero sum site, the site is cleaned up, compliant prior to.
If, if the board wanted to condition approval on, on addressing, and, and I'm not admitting that there's any violations, but I. Right, but we have no issue because we have to do it either way, so we, I have no issue with that.
That way at least through the chair, there's some leverage to make sure the site is.
Compliant, that's fine. Compliant, that's fine.
Anything further, Mr. Smith? I presume you heard that.
Oh, I did, I appreciate it, thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anthony, is there anyone else out there that wishes to be heard? Can you tell? Yeah, I don't see, I don't see anybody either. All right. In that case, then I'm going to close the public session and bring it back to us. Mr. Alfieri, any closing comment?
Yeah, just very simply, the use kind of was refined tonight to a much more reasonable, and at least as it relates to Jackson, we'd request that the board grant the D variance relief for this specific use at this specific location with no outdoor activity in Jackson Township, conditioning the approval on getting approval from Toms River. We would agree to address all the technical comments that were raised during the course of the various meetings, and we would provide Toms River with any resolution with whatever conditions or sentiments that you have, we would make sure Toms River has it, and we would obviously address any violations that might exist on the site as a condition of approval. Otherwise, I think that we've addressed all the technical comments, and now it's really a function of whether the board feels we've met our burden on the D variance relief.
And Mr. Clifford made reference that it's a nine-to-five operation, which is a little bit different than what Mr. Borden put in his work.
That's correct. Mr. Borden's hours were longer, but I did confirm with Mr. Clifton outside, nine-to-five. Sometimes in the summer, he might go to 6:00 PM, he said occasionally, and he might do a portion of a Saturday again, depending on how busy he is, but that's it, no further activity, and four employees.
Thank you. Board members?
I'd like to ask Mr. Hill, Evan, could you elaborate on this wetland issue and clear a picture to the board in regards to what your feelings are?
Yes, so the plans that were prepared and submitted indicate that a portion of the exterior gravel parking area at some point has encroached into the wetlands buffer, which is regulated by the pine lands in this case. In prior meetings, the applicant has agreed to restore those areas to its pre-existing condition, making sure that they comply with pine lands regulations accordingly. I believe, are there violations of pine lands still outstanding out there as well?
No, no, and we agreed to install the fence.
Right, and then to make sure this doesn't occur in the future, they've agreed to put up a six-foot-high chain-link fence, I believe it was, along the wetland buffer so that the site activities cannot further encroach. So we're protecting, we're doing a weekend to protect that wetland buffer. So that's what's been agreed to date.
There's some, as it relates to the fence length, this is a very long line, and there's no activity during a good portion of this property, and there's a natural wooded area, so the fencing, I would suggest that we work.
So this is why we need to see it on a plan, right? So we've agreed in concept, but what I would suggest is it be, the fence be located along the wetland buffer where you currently park, through the gravel parking area to a point, this is in Toms River now, to a point somewhere, I would suggest, to the extents of which the site is developed currently. That way, there's no further encroachment of any activities beyond what's currently permitted and what would be permitted by any action the board takes. All right. I can work with your engineer to explain that.
Understood.
It's really to delineate the wetlands buffer.
And to avoid further encroachment.
And then also delineate the maximum extent of the site activities as they currently exist. Okay.
And further comments, questions? Yes?
I guess it's to our professionals here, does anyone have a history on how these uses were permitted? In other words, it's industrial in nature, the type of, this type of use. The zone is industrial in nature for uses that seem to be permitted. Is this use consistent in character with the uses that are other tenants in this facility? How did it get approved to start with? Was it a use variance, was a site plan, does anybody know?
I can give you.
Before my time.
I can tell you what I know, having been in, working in town for 20-plus years, as a building inspector first, and then became zoning officer in 2007. Prior to my appointment to be zoning officer, there were multiple tenants in this building, but even prior to that, probably 2001, 2002, it was solely occupied by Sam Paul Drywall. And I noticed over the years, once Sam Paul kind of down scaled from this site and they went to a different site, they were slowly occupying the building with different tenants. Not being a zoning officer at that time, I didn't think much of it, but once I got the job to be zoning officer, multiple tenant fit-outs did slowly come into play, and I kind of followed suit with the previous administration, so to speak, and when a tenant came in, looked in the book and see if it was a permitted use, and did a tenant fit out. I just think over the years, more recent years, some of the tenants that were renting outside got a little more aggressive with the site, perhaps took advantage of ownership and expanded the site to where we see it today, and now we're just trying to kind of reel them back in.
Do you, would you like to hear Mr. Fornacola give you a little more detail on the, he's been there for 50 years, he can give you a little more history if you want to hear the history of the operation of the site.
Well, I'm just curious, for example, if an applicant comes in and says, you know, I want to build a retail store, I want 120,000 square foot retail space, and it could be broken up into different tenancies so long as all those uses are permitted, I mean, was this originally, what Mr. Poforo just said, I think, was that it was originally a single use? And then it changed into multiple uses within that single structure?
And just to follow up with the last part, whenever I ever looked for any type of prior approvals on this site, really all I found was a subdivision back from perhaps the 80s, and real no site plan approval, no use variance approval, once again, this all predates zoning laws.
Well, I guess my question really relates to, and let me use this as an example, if this were approved initially as a retail use, a neighborhood's store-type use, 20,000 square feet, could they, could not that owner have several different tenants occupying that 20,000 square feet so long as they were retail uses that were permitted? Could do that, correct?
Correct.
Right. So the question then becomes, what happened here, in my mind, what happened here, is this use that is being proposed now by Mr. Clifton, who, it's not proposed by Mr. Clifton, by the owner, Mr. Clifton is the operator, is that consistent with the overall approvals originally given to the initial structure? I don't, I don't know.
And we don't think there are approvals, I think it predated zoning.
Predated zoning?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's nothing on file, really, for even when the building was built, for even the initial occupant, Sam Paul Drywall was seemingly there for a very long time.
Well, not having records, does that equate to me to be pre-existing or pre-existing zoning?
So if I may, the reason why the diesel mechanic use is here is because it's not specifically permitted in this, that's the use variance, regardless of what the prior approvals were, this use still requires a use variance.
Well, see, that's where I disagree, that's my concern. My concern here is if this specific use for this portion of the building is inconsistent with what was originally approved, if there was something approved, now we have a different question here. It's an impact, not only on this use, but it's an impact on the entire approval granted for all of the uses in this one building. But if I, Mr. Poforo, if I'm hearing correctly, that there are no records indicate if it was ever approved, maybe it does predate zoning, I don't know. Is that what we're saying here? Is that what it is?
Yes, and ideally, if there was any type of approval in the past, a site plan, for instance, you know, it would, it would make this, I think, a lot easier, because we'd have a site plan, we have a parking plan, we have a circulation plan, really, there's nothing on file for anything on this site other than a subdivision from a very long time ago.
Well, I don't know how board members feel, but I, you know, to me, I think we should have some indication as to what all of those uses are, how many parking spaces are required, some kind of a site plan that we can have established here. How can I determine, as has been asked before, how can I determine whether or not there's a safety issue here for internal circulation patterns? We could have these trucks crashing into each other.
So to answer, to try to answer your question, Mr. Hurley, the variance plan that's been submitted to date, and the last revision was April 23, it does indicate the tenants of the building. It indicates that there's an office space of 3,700 square feet, which requires 19 parking spaces. It indicates that there's a framing contractor warehouse of 900 square feet, which requires one, a landscaping contractor warehouse of 2,500 square feet, which requires two spaces, an auto restoration, which is five, which is two service bay, I'm sorry, one service bay, is five parking spaces, and then the diesel mechanic, which is five parking spaces per bay, one bay, which requires five. So we have a breakdown of how the site is currently being used, and how that is, and how that, how those uses are going to interact with the diesel mechanic use. We've also asked for the variance plan to be revised to demonstrate where the, where the use variance activities are taking place, inside the building, delineate the square footage, delineate the section of the building, right? And then also outside the building, delineate the areas, delineate the square footage. That way, we know the intensity of the use as compared to the permitted uses, right? So we've, I think we've asked for that, and I think we will have a, once that plan is perfected, we will have a record of which code enforcement can utilize, and then other boards and the future boards can utilize to compare it with any additional applications that may come in.
As, as I was reviewing the 24497, the PM pine lands manufacturing zone ordinance, to try to get a sense of where a diesel mechanic would fit in, within that PM1 zone, and as I look through the permitted uses, and what I'm looking for is similarities to what could be a diesel mechanic, also looking to see if within the PM1 pine lands manufacturing zone, there's anything that specifically excludes a diesel mechanic. I didn't find anything that specifically excludes a diesel mechanic, but I did see that within that PM1 zone, if I was, you know, going to cherry pick a few items as permitted uses, you know, I see food processing, I see canning and bottling food, beverage and dairy products, I see research and testing laboratories, warehousing of goods and products, they don't want goods and products sold from the premises, I see manufacturing of light machinery, I see fabrication of metal products, I see fabrication of paper products, fabrication of wood products, I see under a category 10, other permissible industries comprising any of the following, it could be brush and broom cleaning, plastic products, electric light and power, and other utility company installations, electronic products manufacturing, farm machinery, sales and service, that one in particular stuck you out, farm machinery, I'm thinking of tractors and whatnot, and they're servicing them there. Then we get to some, some issues raised in subsection 11. Says, "In addition to the above-listed uses, any office or industrial use similar to and not inconsistent with the above may be permitted, provided that at no time shall any use permitted in this article cause or result in," and we've talked about some of this before, "dissemination of dust, smoke, smog, observable gas, fumes or odors, or other atmospheric pollution, noise." All right, so I want to stop at noise for the moment. It services nine-to-five, potentially, minimum five days a week, possibly some days into Saturday. The noise that I'm concerned about is the running of those diesel trucks. Now, they're noisy, and if they're, am I also going to, am I also going to be assured that those diesel trucks will not be running prior to nine o'clock in the morning, nor after closing at night? I can't, I can't tell you specifically how close the residences are, and I don't know how loud somebody can pick it up, but I know they're loud, I know they're noisy, and if they've got exhaust problems, they're going to be even particularly noisy. So I would like to address the noise issue, and I'd like to hear that they will not be run prior to nine or after closing hours.
Mr. Clifton, the question is, if this were approved, would you agree that there'll be no diesel engines running before 9:00 AM or after 6:00 PM during the hours that you, the days that you operate your business?
Yes, I don't even get there till nine. All right, well, it's just that I know that sometimes in colder weather, diesel's got to be started early, you got to have them running, they're hooked up to electric, and you got to keep things warm, and then they're running for a long period of time. So we're not going to have diesel trucks running overnight even though you're closed down, correct?
No, of course not.
Now, the other, the other, there are, there's a conditional use, which also gave me a little bit of pause, and that is the truck terminals is a conditional use, but there's a set of conditions that comes with that, but still the concept of truck terminals plays into my thought processes, working on trucks isn't all that far removed. All right. There is, there's a part of me that says that the operation of that diesel mechanic shop, as defined herein, as conditioned, with the conditions placed upon the record, wouldn't have a substantial detriment to the public good. You've got some mixed uses in there now, you've got a, you've got a, you've got a mechanic shop in there already, which is somewhat consistent to what's going on now, so I don't see what you would be doing is terribly inconsistent with what's happening in there, so there's a certain synergy between the uses that are currently in there and what you would be doing. So I don't see a terrible inconsistency there, I don't see that that poses a tremendous negative impact on our zoning ordinance or our zone plan. The part that concerns me, maybe it's not so much the use, but it's the, it's the facility You're obviously a hard-working guy, and you're working in less than great circumstances over in that structure. I saw that, I've seen other garages, I've been in other garages, and that's not ideal. And I think, I think there's safety issues in there for you, and I'm hopeful that if this, if this does get passed, that when the township comes out, there are going to be certain impositions placed upon that structure that makes it a whole lot safer and a whole lot cleaner for you to operate that diesel shop out of there. for you to operate that diesel shop out of there for you and your guys. So at the end of the day, I don't see that it's a substantial burden, or a substantial negative impact. And I think it, there is a certain public benefit to it. People are going to get some work. I mean, maybe that place isn't the best place. It's not particularly suited, but it is suited. So at the end of the day, my inclination would be subject to those conditions and subject to everything else that was placed on the record to grant the use variance. Those are my thoughts, board members.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I, I agree. I think particularly the farm machinery service, I think an argument can be made that that is consistent with Mr. Clifton's business as well as the current uses that are similar as well. So I agree, I don't think there's any further detriment or negative impact that if we were to approve this with the conditions mentioned, I would feel comfortable with that.
Yeah, I, I would agree with the chairman's analysis. I think the, as far as the positive criteria are concerned, there is a definite benefit as he has eloquently stated. I think there are no negative impacts, as he has also stated, I agree with those on the surrounding community, except for the noise issue, but of course, noise is an enforcement issue. There are state regulations relative to noise as it, as it approaches the property lines, and that will have to be enforced, but that's not for this board to decide. And as far as a use variance is concerned, and with Medici's enhanced quality of proof, all of the uses that that the chairman had written or had stated as being permitted, obviously, a governing body can't think of every possible use that's permitted in a specific piece of property. But it is clear that the intent was to have industrial type uses, as mentioned, manufacturing type of uses, fabrication type of uses, farm equipment repair. Obviously, there has to be, you know, farm equipment, I'm not a farmer, but there had to be some diesel equipment involved in farming too, tractors, things of that nature. And obviously, they have to be repaired. So as far as the enhanced quality of proof is concerned, and why the, the governing body had not specifically made this a permitted type of use, I think it's clear based on the uses that have been enumerated that this is really an intended type of use. So I think all of the requirements have been satisfied.
Any further comments, board members?
Well, I feel that if Mr. Clifton feels this is safe for him, going to go with his brother. Safety issues and health are most important. These are my concerns. And if he feels comfortable doing this, he's been doing it for two years. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Have a motion?
Motion approved with the caveat of all the, how to put it, with all the.
The litany of conditions?
Yes. That's the way to put it.
Mr. Gertner will earn his money if this is.
Yeah, all the outside uses that are contemplated are in the Toms River area. Obviously, there is going to be transitional between the Jackson Township property or the bay into the Toms River area. That's expected and so long as the actual, the principal uses for the diesel are outside and in Toms River and subject to Toms River's approval, whether it be by the planning board or zoning board, I agree.
And you were talking about the delineation between the wetlands, the issues that occur, and the dumping. You want that in there too, and then you go to the pine lands.
Well, that's enforcement.
That's enforcement.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. McElhoney?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Alfieri. Thank you, Mr. Clifford. Good luck.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Do you have anything further, Sean? Nothing? Going to take a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
All right. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.